Order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Swift?
Here.
Thank you.
Terrific. Vice Chair Nolan, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Yes. I think, oh, here we go. Waiting for the flag.
There we are.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Terrific. All right, next on the agenda is public communications. Lucas, Sherry, do we have any written or otherwise email comments from the public not on agenda items?
No.
No.
Okay. We'll move on then. We do have a consent item, minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, January sixth. Anything from the commissioners as to adds or changes? If not, could we have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the Ojai Planning Commission meeting minutes from January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. We have a second. I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any discussion? All right, Sherry, could you call a roll, please?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yeah.
Swift?
Terrific. Next, disclosure of site visits.
Is on mute, sorry.
I'm sorry?
You say yes.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, got it. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We do have one addressed case tonight, four oh six East Topa Topa. Commissioner Swift, would you start, please?
Sorry, say that again?
Uh, yes, site visits and ex parte contacts?
I was not able to make it by the site.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis?
Um, I did go to the site and I had no ex parte comments or contacts.
Okay. Commissioner Trent?
Uh, yes, I went by the site and no ex parte contacts.
And Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes, I've been to the site and no ex parte contacts.
And likewise, I've been to the site and no ex parte contacts. All right, next is our public hearing item. And Lucas, would you take us through that? Give us some background and et cetera.
Sure, I think there'll certainly be some discussion tonight. Good evening, Commission, Planning Commission. My name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Manager with the city. Uh, the proposal you have tonight is located at four oh six East Topa Topa Street. Um, and that address is located within the VMU or Village Mixed Use zoning district. The proposal includes the demolition of approximately two hundred and five square feet to the rear of the property. It's really a sunroom to the rear of that property in favor of an addition, a single-story addition, mind you, of approximately five hundred and sixty-five square feet. The total net, um, in terms of square feet is about three hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, this proposal does include exterior modifications to the residence. Those exterior modifications are to the rear of the property in the form of that addition that I just mentioned. Um, the site is considered non-conforming as there are no parking, there is no parking, uh, provided on site. The code does require two covered parking spaces, uh, for single-family residential, um, which is what this is. The applicant is requesting that one uncovered parking space be provided on site. Uh, and that's within the front yard setback area. There's two applications that are actually, um, a part of this proposal. The first is a planned development permit or a PDP. Uh, and that is applied for by the applicant, which would allow for some flexibility. I know we talked about this, um, with a previous item within the VMU. Uh, and this is within that same kind of, uh, discussion. It allows for flexibility, uh, with planning commission determination, obviously, that's the reason why we're here tonight, um, within the parking requirements. Now, as I'd said before, the parking requirements for single-family is two covered parking spaces. And really, the code is pretty specific about identifying it is either a garage or a carport, um, with walls. So that's, that's really the, the preface behind the planned development permit that, that you're seeing, um, tonight and a part of this application. The second piece to that application is a design review permit or a, a DRP. And that is applied for, uh, and as is required as a part of the exterior modifications that are being proposed. Um, and that's because it's within the VMU zoning district. Um, oh, also, uh, we did receive one letter via email, which I, I believe has been forwarded to the planning commission in support for the proposal. And that was from a neighbor that's within and along, um, East Topa Topa Street. So with that, staff does recommend approval of this proposal as a part of the, um, resolution that's before the commission, uh, consistent and as a part of the findings and conditions of approval that are within that draft, uh, resolution for consideration tonight. So with that, if the commission has any questions of staff, I could certainly answer that. I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be decent questions.
Who'd like to start? Commissioner Lottis, please.
Well, I, um, I, I don't, I actually consider this to be a pretty minor project, but, um, I do, what is the, um, what is the current fence requirement, um, particularly in the front yard?
Yeah, the fence, the fence height requirements in the front yard are four feet. So our four, uh, fences is limited in heights to four feet.
Okay, so.
Now, once, once it's outside of that front yard area, then it's a six-foot fence that would be allowed.
Yeah.
Along those, those.
Okay, so, so the new fence that's there does, in fact, comply with the current, with the recently revised.
Correct.
Front yard setback standards, front yard set standards.
Right, yeah, it has to go through a permitting process, yes.
Okay.
Oh, Lucas, along the, um, questions with that fence, and then the fence has to be set back five feet from the public right of way as well? Or can it be right up to the public right of way?
Right up to the pro- public right of way.
Okay, you know, it's interesting, um, if, because I had, this was for another project I was looking at, but I was just in the Munich code the other day looking at the fencing and I noticed what's in the code and then, um, in one of our, one of the documents in the document center, the information was not up to date. I think the one in the code still says three feet high and the other one says four, but I thought it also said it had to be five feet from the edge of the public right of way.
That was, and that was the old, the.
Okay, so it hasn't been updated, okay.
Um, right, it's been adopted by city council, um, and we're working to get that updated. There is a little bit of lag time.
Okay, that's.
Getting that through.
Yes, good to know.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, while we're here, I want to welcome to the meeting our council liaison, uh, council member Blatts. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Um, are there other commissioners that have questions of staff on this item? Hearing none, I have a few myself. I looked, uh, for the first one, and, uh, this is just indicating I need some training in reading drawings, I guess. But I looked at the drawings and I couldn't tell what it was that was being demolished. I thank you for explaining that, Lucas. Um, I guess it must be the dashed lines on the drawing. This is, uh, drawing A one hundred.
Yeah, so on, on the plan, I think it's the second page of the, of the set of plans or the third page.
Third page.
It'll have, it'll have dashed lines. Those dashed lines indicate walls that are being removed.
Okay. Um, you said in the, in the admin report that there were three parcels here that had been consolidated to one assessor parcel number. And I was confused as to how you could then sell part of it. Could you explain that process?
Yeah, so there was a certificate of, of compliance. It's actually a really good question because there's, you know, it's kind of interesting. We're, we're looking at an application tonight, um, for planning commission consideration determination. But there's been a lot of work on the back, on the backend that, that has taken place to lead it, this proposal up to this point. Um, initially, this, this site, along with the site to the west and the site to the east, were owned by one individual. And it, and it was assigned really one APN or assessor's parcel number. Um, and, and that was somewhat confusing to the, to the trustee and also to, um, the individuals that were looking to sell off those sites in terms of understanding whether or not the underlying lots were in fact, um, still legal. So the certificate of compliance is what allows for that research to make that determination. Um, and that's something that's done, uh, in-house by myself in coordination with the Public Works Director in coordination with the county. There's a lot of, of work and research, uh, that goes into that to, to make that determination. And, um, really what's kind of interesting is this is a part of the Fox tract, uh, which was, um, which is really dates back to the late eighteen hundreds, eighteen eighty, eighteen eighty-eight or eighteen eighty-seven. So it's been, uh, it's been around for, for quite some time. There is no record of those lots ever being merged or, or any sort of, of legal changes that were ever made to any of those lots. So they all still remain in place, uh, as really the subject site, which is single-family, the site to the west, west, which is single-family, and the site to the east, which is a car wash.
Okay, so, so the, the three or four lots or whatever down to one and then back out presumably to three or four is just a paperwork exercise at the tax office?
Yeah, I mean, it's a paperwork exercise, but there's a lot of research and, and discussions and, and certainly looking at old, old maps, uh, and in the history, following, following the history all the way back to the beginning, so.
And the, the APN that you have in the in the, um, administrative report, then this, the one that ends in five-ten, that's just for a single lot of the conglomeration?
Correct. It would be just for the four oh six East Topa Topa and not, it would be a separate APN for the lot to the west, a separate APN for the lot to the east.
Okay. Um, the you mentioned there were two things. There was the change to the structure and there was also a change to the parking configuration, which previously, and I presume that previously it was legal non-conforming with no parking provided.
Yes, so the house, the house was built in nineteen forty-seven, nineteen forty-nine. Um, and I, I can't find any records that show, that have shown that there were ever any parking on site.
And well, obviously, the people that live there, if they have cars, they're parking somewhere, but, but clearly not on the lot. Um, and now they have asked to add a parking space. Is that what triggered the PDP?
Yes. Yeah, so the PDP addresses the, the deficiency in a development standard. One of those development standards is, uh, required onsite parking.
Okay, so if they had not mentioned parking when they came to the city to do whatever they wanted to do, this would have remained legal non-conforming with no parking?
Well, what triggers it also is the addition. So any sort of, any sort of, um, expansions or modifications that add square footage, um, that's really what would be triggering that requirement because if it are non-conforming section of our code, it addresses, uh, non-conforming structures shall not be expanded on.
Okay, so that requires coming to the planning commission for something. It wasn't clear to me from what I could read in the code that it required a PDP as well as a DRP. But, um, I'll take your word for that.
The PDP addresses the, as the, addresses the parking.
Okay.
Required in that zone, Stephen, that, in the VMU zone as well?
Uh, I know DRPs are required in the VMU zone because that's in, uh, oh, gosh. Ten-two-five-oh-four-B-three, no, that's discussing parking.
Yeah.
B-four says you always have to have a DRP if you're doing something in the VMU. I just couldn't, I couldn't tie, I couldn't connect the dots to see where a PDP was required.
Yeah, and, and to be transparent with this, uh, process, the applicant came in with a, with a director's exemption. Um, and once we started doing the research to, to identify how this addition was going to function, um, it was assumed that there was parking on site when I started asking the tough question of, where's your parking on site? And their response was, we have no parking on site.
Never had any, yeah.
So then I reverted to non-conforming, which took me down the road of, well, this is actually the path that you need to move down. Uh, let's get you out of the DE box. Let's put you into the box. It's going to take you down the path to the planning commission, which was the DRP and the PDP.
Okay. I think that's all my questions.
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am, please, go ahead.
Um, so basically, the, um, you know, they don't have to do a curb cut because there is no curb there.
Right.
Um, but would they have to pull a permit from Public Works? I mean, this, of course, is during, for construction, just to put that parking space in? Um, I don't know, may, can you answer that question right now? I was just curious.
Yeah.
How that works?
Uh, yeah, I, I can answer that. I've already had a conversation with our Public Works Director.
Okay.
And, um, because there's no work being done within the public right of way, it would be a permit that would be necessary. Because that, we're, we're, the area that we're talking about is within their property. It's onsite.
Right.
There's, there's nothing in the public right of way that would trigger.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll just have to modify the fence with the concrete pad.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners for staff on this? If not, uh, Sherry, is the applicant available to speak?
Yes, I will let him in here.
Hey, Lucas, I just had a quick question, um, while we're doing that.
Sure, go ahead, John.
As far as the side setback where the fence is, I notice it's awfully close to the roof line. I was just, is that, did they need to get something for that? Or is that within the VMU standards?
Yeah, so they actually had to pull that, a part of their proposal to the rear was to pull back that, um, that side yard setback. Because I think right now it sits at about three feet on the eastern side.
Yeah, I know.
They had to pull that back to a minimum of five feet.
Oh, I see, okay, so they're adjusting the, the addition and they're going to make it five.
They're going to take, they're going to change the whole east wall of the structure?
Yeah, there, well, not the whole wall, just the portion that includes the addition.
Right, and the roof line is going to be lined up with the.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. They don't, they don't have to, to change the configuration of things they aren't proposing to change.
Correct.
In the structure, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
That's a good question.
He's on and, um, he doesn't have a, I don't know, do you have a camera, Garrett?
Um, yes, I do. I don't know why it's, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm here with my wife, Erica. Let me hold on one second.
You should, you should have, oh, there you go.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
These, uh, the top, if you have the gallery view on your screen right now, the, uh, top left four squares and the center-right lower square are your five planning commissioners. And, uh, in order, uh, in the upper left is, uh, Commissioner Swift. I'm Chair Quilisi. Second row is Commissioner Lottis, Commissioner Trent, and Commissioner Nolan, Vice Chair Nolan, excuse me. Um, so, welcome to our meeting, and, um, tell us about your project.
All right, and so we live at four oh six East Topa Topa. It's a single-family home, um, with, in the back. I think the prior owners had put on like a sunroom, so that's what we're proposing to demo. And then we're adding essentially a living room. Um, and as you know, the addition of that living room is what has triggered this parking requirement. Um, so the proposal is to add a parking spot in the front left side of the home if you're facing the front door.
Mm-hmm.
We can go into more specificity about the design if you'd like. We didn't know how broad, brush stroke, you needed to, needed to.
Well, we all, we all have drawings in front of us and, and an overhead like a Google Maps.
Sure.
Earth view.
Sure.
So, and we also have an email from one of your neighbors saying it's nice to have owners here who are taking care of the property and upgrading the neighborhood. So, uh, with that said, are there any commissioners that have questions for the applicants? Commissioner Nolan or Vice Chair Nolan, please?
I do have a question and, um, I think from the drawing, you know, they're, um, eleven by seventeen, so they're small, but it looks like the new parking area, are you proposing concrete slabs or pads with a, like a joint in between?
Yes, and so we're, I mean, the plan there was, as it from a design, uh, standpoint, was to not have a monolithic pore or the look of just a sea of concrete, so we were looking to just break that up. Um, and so, yeah, there's a reveal or a joint between that, um, that's anticipated. That's probably on the larger side of what I, what you see there, um, in terms of being a, a precast piece or some member like that, so it would probably be poured on site. But, um, again, we're still working through that. But yes, to your original question, the intention there is to make it a patterned a little bit, so it's not a, a sea of concrete.
Yeah, and part of the reason I asked was, um, uh, typically, we prefer, if you could do like a permeable driveway or a parking space, but if you do have wide enough joints and you put something like gravel or DG, something that's, uh, not a solid material, then potentially, you know, it'll help with a little bit of the runoff going into the ground rather than down to the street. So, um, so I would be okay with that, you know, if you did something like that and you had permeable joints.
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Lottis, you had a question?
Um, well, actually, I, I, I was going to ask the same question about the, uh, whether they've explored, um, because there may be, there may be additional alternatives that you could use. I'm not sure what the city regulations are, but, um, um, and I'm sure Commissioner Nolan knows more than I do, but, um, I thought that there were more permeable, uh, solutions, that might even offer more permeability than just, uh, you know, the, the joints that have gravel.
Yeah, laying, laying in sand and gravel and then pavers over it might give you, uh, more spaces.
Yeah.
And of course, the, the general policy here is try to keep all the rainwater on your property if you can. So I'm sure you understand that.
And then, um, the other question I had was, are you, are you planning to remove the chain link fence? And I, I asked that because the, the zoning code does discourage chain link. We don't, uh, it doesn't currently prohibit, but it.
Yes. Yes, we're, our goal there is to, and of course, we were waiting to figure out what the, the outcome of today's meeting was, but was to, um, install a wood fence that would be in line with the vernacular of the existing wood fences there. Um, so that it, right now, those, obviously, those two, two fence styles are, are not jiving very well, so, uh, we were looking to, to make that in harmony.
You're going to do that all around the property or just in front?
I'm sorry, can you hear it?
I said, did you plant a wood fence all around the property or just in front or what?
Well, currently, it is a wood fence, uh, on the sides in the back, and we would propose putting it in the front, yeah, to complete it.
I was looking at Google Street View and all I can see from the street is chain link.
That's what's there right now, yes, correct.
Okay.
We, we replaced the chain link fences on the side. When we moved in, there was chain link all around.
Toward the rear of the house, yeah.
Yeah, so we replaced that and we want to do the front, but because of this permit, we weren't sure what to do. And then, as you saw, we have this little puppy, so we're keeping a fence there currently. Um, and then we'll replace it with wood that matches the siding.
I've seen a lot of people put up wooden fences with wide slats or whatever and then have screening on the backside of those. That's what keeps the bigger critters out and the puppies in. But it's still like a wood fence if you're more than ten feet away. Um, I had a question, looking at the street view, um, there seems to be chain link that runs farther to the east from your property. Is that all with, with some fruit trees or something there? Is that all part of the car wash?
Steve, I'm sorry, the, the video just broke up, so I, I think we missed the front end of that question.
I said, I, I just see that the chain link fence runs farther to the east. Is that, that's not your property on the other side of the low chain link fence?
Yeah, correct.
Correct, that's the car.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But the, um, but the whole joint, I mean, you'll, you're, you're, you'll take that, the entire chain link fence to the joints then? Or how's that?
Corners of your property?
Well, yeah, currently, right now, the only existing chain link fence is on the street side of Topa Topa, sorry.
Yes.
It's on the street side, so that everything else, the sides completely, the sides and the rear is a, is a wood cedar fence. We're going to update the front chain link fence, again, pending the decision tonight and knowing that we could put the car in.
Based on your drawing, though, aren't you taking the fence, um, on, along the, um, let's say, starting on the east corner, along the front? And then right before you get to the car space, parking space, are you jogging it up to the house there? Or you, or are you going to be having a big gate for the car to go in?
Yeah, if I understand that question correctly, the intention is to bring it across from the east side at the corner. And then where you would turn in, the fence would turn as well and, and die into the home, so not be a come, come across all the way across and have a big gate.
That's how you have it on the drawing, yeah. So I just wanted to clarify that, okay. So basically, the car is going to be separated, you know, from the front yard.
Correct.
Yeah, give you a little privacy as well from the car.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just had a question on the construction of the addition. Um, so you're going to do, it's going to be different than the, the front house, which is brick, right? You're going to do, uh, looks like tongue and groove with stucco on, on top, is that correct?
Yeah, um, you can see the, in the background here, the existing brick, so that's the majority of the home, um, both interior and exterior. Um, so we, as a construction method, we're going to build the addition out of brick and, to be honest, um, as long as it it conforms from an aesthetic standpoint, it didn't contrast too much. The intention was to not continue that aesthetic, so we would go neutral with stucco, feeling like that didn't have too much texture. Paint it in, we're going to paint it in line with the color of the home. And then on the backside, just to give it a little bit of sense of scale, um, the, it, there's a kind of a kind of a protrusion, if you will, where the windows are and that vert, we were going to do a tongue and groove there to have just a little bit of texture, so the whole thing wasn't just stuck. That's all.
Nice.
I see, I got you, okay. So it'll be brick and then the addition will be kind of a stucco, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Cool, just want to make sure I understand, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Swift, any questions for the applicants?
Um, mine was about the, the parking lot as well, is about, about, you know, the permeable surface and the broken up concrete. That was, that was my number one note, and I think we've, uh, addressed that a couple times. But other than that, um, no, my answer, my questions have been answered.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs., is it Bagnoli?
Uh, Bagnoli, Bagnoli.
Bring no, Bagnoli, okay. Um, Quilici is my original name, so, uh, I see the GN in there in the middle and try to do it right, sorry.
Yeah, I, I say it the American way, but then I studied abroad in Italy and I, I feel compelled sometimes to say it the right way, but either way, it will work.
Bagnoli, yeah, okay. Um, then we are through with questions for you. Um, I would invite you to continue to listen if you care to. You can get to us, uh, either on, uh, Spectrum Channel ten or you can go to the website, Ojai, OjaiCity.org. or you can go to the website, Ohi, OhiCity.org slash Granicus. G R A N I C U S.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
He, he's still on as an attendee. We moved him out of the panelist box.
Out of the panelist box, okay.
He can be a panelist.
See us.
And if you need to call him back, I'll move him back into your, your box.
Excellent, okay, terrific. Um, then we'll, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for deliberation. And um, your thoughts, Commissioner Nolan?
You know, um, I think it's an improvement for that neighborhood. I um, I'm okay with them adding the parking space. I think they're being thoughtful about what they're doing. And I'm, I'm okay with the project. I think it's, it's good.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, yeah, I echo those comments. Um, and I, but I just, so I, I, I'm not real thrilled with the four foot fence in the front yard setback, actually, but um, I think this is an example of what things are going to look like with the change in code. And um, you know, I have some concerns about that, but I realize that is the current situation, so, so be it. But um, one more question of staff then, so we don't have to worry about the um, the set, the, the sightlines requirements on this, um, you know, they're taking the four feet all the way up to the edge of the property line in the driveway. Is there any uh, conflict with code on that?
No, it's, it's uh, at the corner of two um, streets is really what that.
Or two driveways or a driveway.
Hmm, it's not specific about driveways, it's.
Oh, the code, the current code.
The current code, yeah.
I think the current, the current code says anything between the front of the house and the property line is limited to four feet.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Behind that, it can be taller. Is that about right, Lucas?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it can come all the way up to the, the property line where there was that five foot. Um, I would say setback um, from the front property line that has been removed as well. So it's a height increase and then the, sorry, the height increase and then the uh, the removal of that setback.
Right, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I know that our code has changed, but I do think it's unfortunate for several reasons. I agree with Commissioner Lottis. Number one, now you all of a sudden you start kind of boxing the properties in. There's no street interface with our small town neighborhood character. And in addition, getting back to the sidelines, so if you're backing out, you can't even see if somebody is potentially walking or driving down the street. But I, now it's our new code and I guess we have to go with it, but I just wanted to also voice my opinion on that.
Yeah.
For what it's worth.
The, and, and just in response to, to that, cause I, I, I see that point. I think uh, at the council level, I think even at this commission level, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding that. Uh, with this street, we're talking about a dead end street that has, I think, a total of seven houses that front, front on that street, so.
Uh, e- even that said, if, if the fence is only four feet high, you should, if you're, even if you're sitting in anything except a, a, a low slung sports car, you should be able to see something out there on the street, I think, when you back out.
Yeah, the fence does have a window in it. I don't know if you guys noticed, but it looks like.
It's on that, yeah.
It does have a window, but I, I, I was, uh, I mean, this is one of the first examples we're seeing of a fence being built to the revised, the, the change standard and, and I was a little, I saw how high four feet is, I, I, I went, holy cow, so.
You could, you could also, if you choose to, uh, go on to the two hundred block, I think it is, of Ventura Avenue. Uh, where, where uh, Council member Francino lives. And she has increased the height of the fence from three feet to four feet right next to the sidewalk. It's not down the sides of the property yet, so it's not clear that it's keeping the dog in. But uh, you can see what the difference is between three and four feet, just driving. It's between Matilah and Aliso on Ventura.
Right. And if there's a sidewalk there, although the sidewalk would be beyond the property line, so.
The sidewalk.
There is, okay.
Anyway, yeah.
Any other, any other comments of deliberation by commissioners?
Yeah, I uh, I, I like, I like the upgrade. Um, I think it's, it's gonna really dress things up and clean stuff up and it sounds like they have a, a puppy that, you know, would, would benefit from having a fence. Um, yeah, I uh, I like it. And that's uh, yeah, it's pretty, pretty simple and clean.
I agree, it's, it's a neighborhood that, that uh, will be, I think, greatly benefited by the changes. You, you won't see much in the, in the structure of the house unless you're, you know, off to the side by coming past the car wash. But um, the rest will look a lot better, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with everybody. I think the um, you know, the current structure is non-conforming. No, uh, no parking at all, so people are required to park on the street, you know, which fills up that street pretty quick. Um, you know, they're gonna remove uh, an unpermitted patio, which I think is great too. Um, so they're gonna, you know, add parking uh, onsite and they're gonna replace that unpermitted patio with a nice addition. So I think it's gonna be a a nice uh, benefit to that little, that little neighborhood. It's gonna clean things up, like you said, Commissioner Swift, I think it'll be a neat little addition to the, to the neighborhood.
All right, uh, well, do we have a motion then with regard to this case? Uh, Vice Chair Nolan?
Sure, I'd be happy to, to make a motion that we approved design review permit DRP twenty one dash zero zero one and planned development permit PDP twenty dash zero zero two to demolish a portion of an, I don't know if I have to read all that, do I? I don't think I do.
No, if we, if we approve the DRP and the PDP, I think that covers all the rest.
I think so too, because um.
While making the motion, you don't have to read all of it, but.
I, yeah, okay, good. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Swift. Um, any other discussion of the motion? If not, Sherry, would you call roll, please?
Chair Colisi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Commissioner Swift?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. And to the Bagnoli, Bagnolis? I'm sorry, um, so you have, you have the permission from the city count or from the uh, Planning Commission? Uh, the rest of it, you work with city staff. Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on to item three. Uh, future agenda items. Wanna fill us in on this, Lucas?
Yeah, and actually I trying to get to item three here. Yeah, so if you hear, it looks like we've got title ten as discussion items uh, coming forward. I do know that we do have one uh, title ten that is, is ready for a public hearing before the commission prior to going forward to city council.
Another set of corrections?
Yep, yeah, so that should be, uh, I don't think we'll make the, the third, the February third meeting, but I think we'll make the seventeenth for that as a public hearing item. So you should expect that.
So be the, be the same material, but we'll do it as a discussion item on the third and then a public hearing on the seventeenth?
Yes, so there's po, there's a possibility of, of a public hearing on the seventeenth for title ten and then um, additional discussion as a discussion item for title ten as well, so.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners? All right, item four is uh, I guess, kind of a new addition to our agenda. Uh, Commission Member Reports. This is a chance for any commissioner to ask questions, make announcements. Anything that floats your boat.
And uh, Steve, if I could just jump in here, um, this was, um, staff added this a, agenda item after last time where there was a, there was a request from the commission to have uh, something on the agenda where commissioner, commissioners could ask staff uh, about more general questions as opposed to, you know, the difficulty of asking, you know, when you have a, an item before you, uh, for example, consideration of a specific DRP, you, your questions tend to have to be limited to that particular item, but you have a, if you have a more general question of staff, and we don't have to say a discussion item of say title ten on the agenda. We're, we added this item, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Reports, and it mirrors what's currently on the council agenda where there's a section for council reports. And so one thing I would say though is, you know, the Brown Act still applies to this and so, um, and staff, I mean, uh, members of the commission can ask staff of, you know, you know, uh, questions on very general topics, um, uh, and you know, staff can comment and give brief answers to. However, I would caution uh, members of the commission on um, commenting on specifics of any matter that may come before the commission uh, at a later date. And that's kind of a broad category, but um, you know, because it's not agendized, if you want it, I would caution staff from talk or commit, the commissioners from talking about, say, a particular address or something like that, because there's a very good chance that that could come before the commission at a later date as part of another project. But for example, um, and again, can, um, for example, if, if commissioners wanted to ask a specific or a question like about how the city is handling heritage, the heritage, heritage trees, or how the city is handling, say, hedges or fences, that would be an appropriate question, but maybe not a question about, say, for example, you know, how is it, how is that, uh, what is the uh, staff doing about this particular property on, located on Ohi Avenue? That would not be, because um, it may come before you uh, for, for an action item li- later in the future.
And discussing the merits of that particular property edges over into deliberation of something that isn't on the agenda.
Correct, yes.
Okay, but it would be appropriate for a commissioner to suggest that, that property or a particular issue about that property be agendized for a future meeting.
Yes, and you'd need it, uh, you'd need two commissioners to request that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, let's, let's go around the tree. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, anything you'd like to bring up or ask about?
No, I, I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis?
I'm, I'm good. I don't have any question. Believe, believe it or not, I don't have any questions tonight.
Next one.
But um, I, I do have a, a question for clarification though, so. Um, so for example, two weeks ago, I asked a question about a tree, but all I was interested in was whether staff was aware of the situation. So I mean, I assume that that's okay to ask, is there, is staff aware of a, of a particular, you know, whatever situation on a property? I- is that okay to ask? And then the, and then the staff can say, yes, we're aware, we're, we'll be handling it. Is that, I mean, I assume that's okay, no?
Well, I, yeah, it depends on how you ask it. Um, if you, eh, so for example, if you were to say that you think that that, that tree is in violation of our code and is staff doing anything about it, that would probably be something that would cross the line into um, um, you know, stuff that gets you off the Brown Act. But if you were to say, ask a general question about you noticed a tree at, at this location, is it, is this, is this something that staff is considering? And staff can say yes, but I don't, I would caution staff not to say anything beyond that.
Your problem.
Yeah, yeah, so you can bring it to staff's attention, but.
Respond whether it's a code enforcement, um, is a code enforcement issue or not, or what, not even that?
No, because I, I, I'm, I'm erring on the side of caution here, because there, there could be a chance that it, it comes before not, uh, the commission at some point. Um, for example, if one of the code enforcement remedies is to get a permit, that property, uh, for example, to get a design review permit, that property is gonna come before the commission. And so to preserve, you know, um, you know, their rights and to, and to protect the commission.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're, I mean, it just seems like, uh, if all we're asking about are factual matters with no opinion opined or anything, um, anyway, I, that's fine. I get what you're saying and I.
Yeah, it, it's, 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 it's a, it's a fine line. I, I, I understand. It's sort of a complicated thing, but you know, it just, I, I, my, my only real, r- real um, I guess, warning would be not to avoid addresses, because you know, that, if it's, you know, but if, for example, if you wanted to make a comment about generally about things happening in, for example, the VMU or the C one zone, that would be okay. Um, because you know, those, the zone doesn't ever come before the commission, but maybe specific properties in that zone do, so. But again, general comments.
You might be able to ask a question. If this situation occurred with a tree in a particular location relative to the right of way, would that be a code enforcement issue or would it be a permit issue?
Correct, and then I, I.
As long as you're not referring to a specific case.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and there is maybe perhaps a limited circumstance where you can refer to, like, for example, there are certain parts of the city where Caltrans actually has the authority up on Ohi, Ohi Avenue, for example. And so that might be a valid question is that, is this something that staff has the power over at this particular address or is that Caltrans? And staff would be able to answer that question and that, that would be permissible, so.
Um, uh, Commissioner Trent? Anything you want to bring up?
Yeah, actually, I, I just had a question on the general plan update. Just curious, I know that um, that was gonna be put uh, in front of us again. I was just curious on dates.
Uh, that one I could actually answer, cause I do need to give this commission uh, an update. Um, I know at one point, the general plan, we were talking about a workshop that would be taking place at the end of this month. Uh, that has, uh, as of uh, today, um, and there'll be stuff on the general plan website that's been postponed um, for at least a month, if not potentially longer, given this, this COVID situation that continues to um, to die down and then ramp back up. It feels like it's ramped back up to a point where uh, it just doesn't make sense to hold something at the end of this month, given the situation that we're in right now. So uh, we're looking at the appropriate time and looking at the timeline for that as well.
Okay.
Not even us old folks are getting shots yet, so.
Yeah.
And then um, after that, is it gonna come back in front of the Planning Commission at some point, or is it, is that, is that part of the process?
Right, so it will be before the, the Planning Commission a couple of times, actually, uh, throughout this process. Uh, so it won't be that the Planning Commission has only seen it once. Um, there'll be a couple um, bites, I guess, bites at the apple, if you will, uh, in terms of an opportunity to weigh in.
Perfect, cool, thank you.
Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, I have a question for Lucas, just a general question about the project uh, that we discussed tonight on page two. I just, I'm trying to get some education on this. Um, since it's non-conforming, but it's, is it technically still required to have two covered parking spots and we're we're exempting them from doing that? And then underneath the PDP, the applicant is requesting reduction in the required covered parking for single family residential structures from two spaces to one, but it's still uncovered. I'm just trying to figure out like what um, I just wanna get caught, kinda, kinda get caught up to speed as that parking spot. Are they required to add it or are they not? And then if they're supposed to add two, are they requesting to just do one and then still have it uncovered? Um, that's all. I just, I just wanna kinda get up to speed in case these projects come up again in the future. I'm kind of a little bit more educated on that process.
Absolutely, and I think this is good education for the entire commission um, in regards to this. Uh, PDPs allow flexibility in terms of design and development standards. Uh, and that's only specific to the VMU. That's, that's where this plays. And if we were looking at a residential uh, piece of property where this was the case, we wouldn't be looking at a, at a PDP, that planned development permit. So it gives flexibility um, in terms of those development standards. Here, we're looking at uh, reduction in parking. Um, the applicant at one point wasn't looking at doing any parking, but in having brief conversations with them, uh, it was, it was apparent that they felt like they could try to fit a parking space on site. So that's where the one parking space uncovered um, came into play. Now, the commission tonight voted in favor of allowing for that, uh, one uncovered parking space within the front yard area uh, of the property. So by, by the standards that exist there, is, I think your question is So by by the standards that exist there, is, I think your question is, from a nonconforming standpoint. Is it still nonconforming? By the way in which the code reads, yes, however, per the PDP that was just approved by the planning commission. Um, it meets that standard as it, as it, so it allows for that expansion um to the rear of the property.
It's, it's almost.
Nonconforming because it doesn't meet current code, but it's legal because of the PDP and whatever else.
Because of our, because of the process that is built into the municipal code, correct?
Con- conceptually, it's almost like a variance in that we're, a variance requires different findings, but conceptually, it's, it's almost the same as a variance. But through the, 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 the pl- the PDP, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I would, I would only caution with the variance process, there's other more specific, I would say, more stringent findings. With the PDP, you're looking for some flexibility in how that uh that's potentially addressed.
And taking a more holistic view of the property, I think, with the PDP.
Yeah, it's a discretionary process too, so it it doesn't necessarily give a a straight line, that there's gotta be a fair. Argument for that reduction.
And that, um, just as a little bit of background, you will find as we go through various cases over the years. Much of the city um would have to be called legal nonconforming. Either, either, well, I guess mostly because the stuff was built before the ordinances were written or modified. To make more stringent requirements, so the property's legal because it's there. It's nonconforming because it doesn't meet the current code.
Yeah, and there's a lot of properties in the downtown area that fit that description.
Right.
So, so quick question is, so the PDP only applies in the VMU? It doesn't apply in like an R one or night, R two type of situation?
Doesn't apply, it doesn't apply within those, those um standards, uh. I have to look at the code to see if there's other zones that would apply to it, um, VMU is definitely one of them.
Yeah, I was just, just curious, okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, so I I just wanna commend staff for working with the applicant on on getting a parking space added. Um, because I don't think I would have been so happy approving the project without, without at least um doing that. And it's gonna, it will be very compatible one, and so I, I, I thank you for working, working that out.
Absolutely, yeah, no, it was, it was a good, a good discussion, I I know, as I said in the beginning. The transparency is, is I thought it was a DE in the beginning until we started realizing that there wasn't any parking onsite. Then I was like rolling back the carpet and saying, okay, so where do we go from here? And it took some diving into the code to get to where we're at today, it's simple, but jeepers. The code certainly um has its own little path to get us to to this point, so.
And and uh when you start making changes in in a structure outside of the VMU. Cause I've done some at, in our residential area, you have to, you have to do. All of the addition or change to current code. The stuff that you're not proposing to change remains legal nonconforming. So, that's kind of the general rule, I did have one more general question, and I brought this up uh to Lucas. A a week or two ago, just offline. One of the things that is kind of a quirk in the code right now is the definition of outdoor dining. And we've talked about this on occasion. But the definition of outdoor dining in the mun- in the Ohi municipal code is, I think, different from the definition of outdoor dining. Most everywhere else. For us right now, outdoor dining is only in the public right of way or on sidewalks, which is typically the same thing. And and the state right now says no outdoor dining anywhere. And and um, so I I was curious because I was aware of a situation where there was outdoor dining. As commonly understood on private property at a restaurant. And I've, I felt that it was compliant with the code, but probably not with county and state. Edicts about di- outdoor dining, so I asked the question, and I think the answer was, Lucas?
Yeah, so just in in general terms, I'm not gonna get into a specific address, but outdoor dining. By by the code's strictest of standards speaks to um sidewalks and and public rights of way. Uh, there is outdoor um, outdoor facilities that can fall into the category of private property. Uh, which I think we've even had discussions about that here through title ten. Um, and I know that we'll probably have, as we, as we do some deeper dives into some of this information. Have a deeper dive into outdoor dining as it relates to um, to restaurants and and other. Commercial uses that could benefit from that, so. In a general sense, if we look at the strictest standard of how our code reads, and it's just, uh, you know, in in terms of it reading. The plain language, it is just the uh, the public rights of way areas. But there's some wiggle room within that to also discuss private um areas being included in certain circumstances. So.
And and right now, because we're under the state regional order, um, it preempts all of our, of our current uh authority. Becau- um, because of the state emergence, they're, they're, it's under the state's emergency power, normally. A state can't, the state can't uh override our zoning power within our jurisdiction, but this is under their emergency authority, and so. Some cities have taken a different view and they've had confrontations with the state, but for the moment, yeah, this is the state, the state preempts. That may change if uh they lift that regional stay at home order, but for now.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If not, let's uh hear from our city council liaison, uh, council member Blatts, welcome.
Well, thank you, Steve, I appreciate it, and hello, everyone, and I don't have a lot to share with all of you, I appreciate all the work you guys are putting in, and um. You know, I, there was a lot of debate over that fence height, so uh it didn't come lightly. And um, we're all happy to see Suz's dog safely in her front yard under the four foot fence, so that's, I'll leave that at that. I don't really have anything, but I do appreciate all the work you guys are putting in, and everybody, I know it's been a long year, if you have any questions for me, let me know, but um. I I think you guys are doing a good job.
Okay, you'll be with us for February, March then?
I will be here when I can, I'm, you know, it's, it's, I'm I'm at work right now and still working, so I will do my best to to log in when I can. And trust that uh if I don't get on during your meeting, I always make sure to watch them. Um, and fast forwarding is a nice feature on YouTube for some of the stuff, but uh always make sure to check in what's going on, and if there's anything. You guys need me to bring back to council, let me know, I know, um, you know, as we're moving forward, there's gonna be some issues, and I. I appreciate the feedback, I know uh Commissioner Swift and I have had some discussions, and he's looking into some of the lighting, electrical stuff, all that kind of stuff. And um, I appreciate that feedback, because the more I understand it, or whoever the liaison is, the little bit easier it is to talk about it when it pops back up at council.
Terrific, and congratulations for being busy.
Thanks.
A lot of people are not going to work right now.
Well, it's uh the water case responses are due on January twenty ninth, so the next nine days of my life are pretty much chained to. Uh, it's, we'll just call it water torture, I think we'll just call it water torture.
Okay. There being no other obvious business before the commission at uh six fifty nine PM, I declare the meeting.